All right, the July 11, 2023 work session of Annapolis County Council is called Order. Even though we're virtual, sometimes if you are, if you don't mute your device, you may have an electronic device that wants to go ahead and turn it off or silence it at this time. But if Secretary, please take the real call or the attendance.
Okay, I'm just gonna go in order of district. Mr. Smith?
Present.
Ms. Pickard?
Present.
Mr. Volkey. I do not see that Mr. Volkey has joined yet. Ms. Hammer?
Present.
Ms. Fiedler?
Present.
Ms. Radvian?
Present.
Ms. Ledbetter? Also, I do see Ms. Ledbetter is here. Thought I saw her. Ms. Ledbetter, I do see that you're here. I'm gonna mark you as present. Mr. Bennett?
Present.
And standing in for the auditor, Ms. Mock?
Present.
Okay, Mr. Chair, we do have six council members here. Legislative council and a representative for the county auditor.
All right, thank you. All right, so we're gonna go using the agenda that was sent out here in the last, I guess, forty-eight hours. We're gonna start off with Bill number fifty-three twenty-three concerning solar. So, Mr. Hunt, over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Ethan Hunt on behalf of the administration, and I have Kelly Kenny and Lynn Miller as well, here to discuss Bill fifty-five, fifty-three twenty-three, which was heard last week. This bill revises the definition of solar generating facility community to align with state law. As rooftop mounted only solar generating facilities as conditional uses in C-one, C-two, and C-three districts, it exempts solar generating facilities on county-owned or leased property, sanitary landfills, reclamation areas, and rooftops from some of the conditions in the county code, and also removes distance limitations between first, distance limitations for solar generating facilities in certain circumstances. The bill was amended, as you know, at the last meeting. There is another amendment that the administration is currently working on. Mr. Chairman, this was an amendment that you discussed with us, I believe, about a week and a half ago regarding decommissioning for rooftop solar. So we will be introducing that at the next council meeting. We're happy to take any questions.
I don't see any hands from any of the council members. Any questions from reference to fifty-three twenty-three?
Miss, Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am, please.
Um, would this be appropriate time to discuss? There was an amendment I had prepared for discussion purposes to this bill?
Oh, yeah, I think so.
Um, I, I believe it was circulated yesterday. It was an amendment specifically related to preserving the soil that is under solar panels on agricultural land. And the main purpose, there's a lot of technical soils science that has gone into the background and the drafting of this bill. Did work with GAN and some of subject matter experts that they had contacted to draft with this. And I'm currently in, have shown it to the folks over at the Soil Conservation Board just to kind of, they know more about soil than I do. But I wanted to present this to the council and the administration in particular, just to make sure if there were any particular questions about the purpose or the, you know, the contents of the amendment to make sure that, while I may not have those answers sitting here today with you, but I can make sure that I worked to find those answers so that we're prepared for Monday night.
I guess that's good news.
Sounds great.
All right.
Yep, please.
Very quickly, so on behalf of the administration, I want to say we appreciate the intent of the amendment, and we, you know, we support addressing this issue in concept. We're just, we're concerned because this is a rooftop solar bill. So I don't know that adding ag components is necessarily the most appropriate for this bill. And we also would want to talk to solar developers to see if, you know, industry folks, to see if this is the best way to legislate and regulate this issue. And so I think, you know, and we'd want to talk to some of the other ag folks and environmentalists as well. So I think we would ask the councils to reject it at the appropriate time, but we want to continue the conversation and make sure that we do find a way to address this issue that works.
So your objection to it is, is that you said it was because of, this is purely focusing on the rooftop pieces and not ground-based systems?
Correct, correct. And I'm, I'm not sure if OPZ or the Office of Law wants to weigh in as well. It is, it is very technical to a level of detail that we don't usually see in the county code. And I think Office of Law was going to check and see if this is something we even have the power to regulate. So I don't know that we have any answer to that yet, but we're looking into it.
I am looking into the preemption issues on that, and I will get back to you.
Hi, and Lynn Miller, PC, I'll just add to what Ethan said that there's already a number of special exception requirements in the code that would relate to the RA zone, which is typically where our ag land is found. And there, they include provisions to protect priority preservation areas, ag preservation areas, prime ag soils, et cetera. So there's already a pretty robust set of requirements that would, that would fall in place for solar facilities in agricultural areas. Thanks.
I guess, yes, I guess if you, yeah, if you can, over the next week, just keep in touch with Ms. Ledbetter, just to, I get it, totally understand the focus of this being rooftop mounted systems. But Ms. Ledbetter, did any, any additional questions on?
No, no, this is exactly the discussion that I was hoping to have it. So thrilled to see it develop.
Okay, okay.
And we'll continue to talk. Thank you.
All right, if there are no more questions, we're gonna switch over to Bill number fifty-four twenty-three. And I think, Ms. Dyer, it is over to you.
Um, so this is Ms. Hammer's bill. I don't know if you wanted to give her a chance first.
Yes, I'm sorry. I'm just looking at the admin folks who are queued up, Ms. Hammer.
Yes, just as we talked about the meeting last week, this is just further, I feel like a correction to our, to what we have for tax credits for residential properties to meet high-performance environmental lead standards. And this would just expand that to our commercial properties. So, and then we had amendments that would increase the credit a bit from my original bill, just to make it in line with what the credits that are offered for residential property.
All right, any questions from the council members, reference to Bill number fifty-four twenty-three? All right, we're gonna move on over to fifty-five twenty-three. I do want to say that fifty, I would like to have the double discussion on fifty-five twenty-three as we're going through it to also encompass sixty-one, so that we'll, we'll obviously speak to fifty-five twenty-three. But at the end of this discussion on fifty-five, it's a transition straight to sixty-one, is it sixty-one twenty-three?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
All right, sixty-one twenty-three, so that they're the same people who are involved could speak to both of these pieces of legislation. So is Mr. Volkey online at this time? If not, I do want to go to Mr. Barron or any of the admin folks to sort of speak to this.
Mr. Chair, so we had proposed moving fifty-five to be grouped with sixty-one a little bit later in the agenda. I think what I had proposed was doing fifty-six and fifty-seven at this moment, at this point in time.
Okay. All right, you know, we'll see him online so that we can go a little extra time. So we'll transition to fifty-six twenty-three. And Mr. Barron, I'll turn it over to you.
Just trying to find my mute button, Mr. Chair. So I, I do believe Legislative Council has PowerPoint for, for the group. If it might be more appropriate to start on, on that, because it'll provide a lot of background on why the admin is bringing forward fifty-six twenty-three.
Mr. Bennett, I can go ahead and bring that up on screen. Also, I do want to say good morning to Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Laura. Yeah, if you could bring up the PowerPoint, that would be great. All right, and so this is just a few slides on what the state has done and how the state law works, and then how the, the county's responsibilities and authority under the state law. So if we could jump to the next slide, Laura. And so this is how we got here. There was a constitutional amendment last November at the general election where voters approved or authorized individuals at least twenty-one years of age to possess and use recreational cannabis starting July first, 2023. During the twenty-three legislative session, the State General Assembly passed Chapters two fifty-four and two fifty-five, and that established a licensing framework and regulated the growing processing and retail sale of cannabis in the, in the state of Maryland. Jump to the next slide. This is what's basically allowed. Adults twenty-one and over can purchase one and a half ounces of flour, twelve grams of concentrate, and seven hundred and fifty milligrams of edible product. Adults are also allowed to grow up to two plants per household. It has to be kept out of sight, and then landlords and property managers still can restrict whether you can have homegrown. There are still smoke-free spaces. Cannabis cannot be smoked in public spaces, including streets, sidewalks, parks, and schools, bars, and restaurants, and on public transportation. Jump to the next slide. So the state imposed nine percent sales and use tax on the retail price of non-medical cannabis. This is estimated to generate about thirty-six million dollars during fiscal twenty-four, and that rises to a hundred and forty-six million dollars by fiscal twenty-seven. The sales and use tax revenue is distributed as follows. The administrative costs of regulation enforcement go to a special fund that comes off the top before the percentage distributions. And then thirty-five percent goes to the Community Reinvestment and Repair Fund. We're gonna get into what that is in just a minute. Five percent's gonna go to the counties based on revenue collected within that county, and those should be general funds for the county. They shouldn't come with any, any strings other than there's a requirement to distribute, to make a distribution to the municipalities that may have dispensaries. We'll get into that in a minute also. Five percent's gonna go to the Cannabis Public Health Fund, five percent to the Cannabis Business Assistance Fund, and then the remaining balance goes to the State General Fund. This, the three funds to pay, or the three distributions to pay attention to for the county are the Community Reinvestment and Repair Fund, the five percent that the county gets from dispensaries located in the county, and, and then the Cannabis Public Health Fund. And so we'll get into what, where the county's role is in those three distributions in just a second. The sales and use tax is distributed, five percent of that, that total that we talked about gets distributed back to the county where the, based on a percentage of revenue collected from sales in that county. From that, at least fifty percent of that goes to any municipalities within the county that, that also have dispensaries. And so the, the county would have to then redistribute that to any, any municipality that has a dispensary in it. They'd get fifty percent of what, what comes from that dispensary. We go to the next slide. This is the Community Reinvestment and Repair Fund. If you recall, that's getting thirty-five percent of the money. So that's, that's a big chunk of, of the money is gonna go to the, this repair fund. This fund's administered by the Office of Social Equity, and it's designed to be used for community-based initiatives intended to benefit low-income communities, and then communities that have been disproportionately impacted by the cannabis prohibition. So the Office of Social Equity right now is trying to determine which communities have been most impacted by the disproportionate enforcement of the cannabis prohibition. And so once that formula is developed, that's gonna be how the money is gonna be directed. And the idea is that the comptroller is gonna distribute this money looking at the period from July first, 2002, to July, January first, 2023. And they're calculating the, the number of cannabis possession charges in, in the county as compared to the number in the state. And so that formula is gonna then combine with the Office of Social Equity formula, and we'll get numbers from the state as to how much of this repair fund is gonna come to the county. State law does require that the, that the county adopt a law that establishes the purpose for which these funds are gonna be used. And I believe this is where Bill number fifty-seven twenty-three comes in. And so we'll hear more about that from the administration, that's, that's sort of their response to what the state's requiring the county to do with regard to coming up with a law establishing how this fund is gonna be used.
In that, real quick, on that slide, is the, is the intent behind looking at the twenty-year data?
That audio tape, do you still not think that he should be unaccountable for what is being alleged in that indictment?
Excuse me, Mr. Chair. Please, everyone, unless you are speaking, ensure you are on mute. Thank you very much.
So is the intent behind the July first, 2002, the twenty-year data is to see demand? So the, the possession charges will, is that what will highlight the demand of?
No, so this is, the idea here is to calculate which communities had been most impacted by the, by the criminalization of cannabis. And so they're looking at, they're looking at Maryland, and they're trying to see which, whether there was more, more cannabis arrests in certain jurisdictions, and then they're gonna try and shift more of that money to the jurisdictions that had more cannabis arrests over that twenty-year period.
But, but couldn't the arrests have simply been where the dealers were located? And not the impact of where, you know, you could have had five hundred, you know, marijuana users, and I'm gonna use my county in Severn, and they all went to, you know, Baltimore County to purchase it, and they got arrested in Baltimore County. Does, does that?
It's, it's not a perfect formula. I think the state struggled with how to, how to do this calculation. And so you're absolutely right. The, the, the drawing of the lines isn't, is not perfect. This was just a policy decision that the, the state made trying to, trying to make sure that the communities where these arrests were made get a greater share of this, this fund. But you're absolutely correct that, that the, 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 the formula is not perfect. There are, it doesn't account for everything.
All right, thank you.
Yep. All right, so if we could jump to the next slide, this is the Cannabis Public Health Fund, I believe. And this, oh. There we go. And this fund was established to support the, the Cannabis Public Health Advisory Council, which is gonna study the public health impacts of cannabis legalization. They're gonna, there's a grant or a grant program within the fund, depending on how the Advisory Council decides the fund should be used. And the local, local governments may see some of this fund. There's, there's language in the bill that directs the fund to support local, local health departments with substance abuse disorder counseling and treatment for individuals, to provide training and equipment for local law enforcement to help recognize impairments due to cannabis. And then there's also gonna be money for educational programs to be used in schools. Now we're gonna get into cannabis licenses to operate a cannabis business in the state. The state, a person must first obtain the license from the Maryland Cannabis Administration. Medical cannabis growers, processors, and dispensaries are licensed, that are licensed under the Medical Cannabis Commission that wish to continue operations as a, as a recreational dispensary are required to convert their cannabis licenses. The holder of an unconverted medical cannabis license is not allowed to operate after July first, 2023, but they are allowed to, to hold the license for resale to another person. Jump to the next slide. These are all the various types of licenses in this, that are gonna be in the state. I think you're gonna wanna pay attention to the first three, the standard grower license that authorizes ten thousand to three hundred thousand square feet of indoor canopy space. The standard processor license, this allows somebody to process more than a thousand pounds of cannabis each year. And then your, your standard dispensary license, this, this authorizes you to operate a physical location to, to sell cannabis and cannabis products. The next four licenses, the micro grower, microprocessor, microdispensary, and incubator space, all kind of travel as one. This is something the state's looking at right now. The idea is that an incubator space might house, might house a grouping of these micro licenses. And I think the idea was to give opportunities to small, smaller, smaller entities that may want to get into this space. And I think that this area is still sort of being developed by the, the state as to how, how this is all gonna work with the, the micro, micro grower, processor, and dispensary. On-site consumption is a, is an area that we'll talk a little bit more about, but this is, this is a license that the county does have much more control over. The license would authorize a facility where individuals can smoke cannabis outdoors. And basically, the way it's described in the bill is it's sort of like a bar for, for cannabis. And again, the, the county has full discretion over the, the onsite consumption license. So we'll talk about that in just a minute. So the dispensary licenses. If, if you are a medical, if you are a medical dispensary as of January first, 2023, and you were properly zoned, the county has no authority to change anything with regard to you. You're automatically, under state law, basically grandfathered into becoming a recreational dispensary. And I think most of that has already happened with, most of the medical dispensaries have, have already converted their licenses to become recreational dispensaries. Under state law, a dispensary cannot locate within five hundred feet of schools, childcare centers, playgrounds, recreation centers, libraries, or public parks. And they can also not locate within a thousand feet of another dispensary. State law does authorize the county to reduce these distances, but I don't believe we can go, we can increase them. Jump to the next slide. And this was the onsite consumption licenses that I was discussing. This is an onsite consumption license authorizes the entity to operate a facility where cannabis can be consumed, but you can't have indoor smoking. The establishment has to be authorized by the county or municipality where the facility is gonna be located. And then the county or municipality does have the authority to prohibit or restrict the outdoor smoking of cannabis at that site. And then they have full authority to adopt zoning and planning requirements for the, the onsite consumption at those establishments. The, the county is gonna have to affirmatively authorize this. This is, this is one area that the, the state left the county full discretion over. And so here's what the, the takeaways are. The, the local governments have, this slide shows what authority the local governments have. They're allowed to establish reasonable zoning requirements for cannabis businesses. They can reduce, reduce below state minimums, the distance that a dispensary can be located from those, those sensitive areas that I, I mentioned earlier. They can restrict or prohibit the, the location and operation of onsite consumption businesses. And then they're allowed to decide how to distribute the local share of the sales and use tax revenue. And then the, the final bullet there is they're required to adopt a law that establishes how the Community Reinvestment and Repair Fund is, is gonna be used. And then there's prohibitions that, that the state law had on, on counties and municipalities. And the county is not allowed to establish zoning or other requirements that are unduly burdensome to a cannabis licensee. The county cannot impose licensing, operating, or other fees or requirements on a cannabis licensee that are disproportionately greater or more burdensome than those imposed on other businesses with similar impacts on the area where the cannabis licensee is located. And then a county or municipality cannot prohibit transportation through or deliveries within the political subdivision by the cannabis, by cannabis establishments located in other political subdivisions. And then there's a couple more prohibitions. The local governments can't prevent an entity from converting its medical cannabis license as long as it was in compliance with all regulations as of January first, 2023. Again, most of that has already happened. And then the county is prohibited from negotiating or entering into an agreement requiring a cannabis licensee or an applicant to provide money, donations, in-kind contributions, services, or anything of value to the political subdivision. So that is basically how the state law interacts with the, the county. And I think that's the, what's gonna lead us into the two bills that the administration has. Or I'm available for questions too. I see a hand has, has popped up.
Ms. Fiedler, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, quick question on the use chart, I see that we're changing commercial and industrial from special exception to conditional. Is that because it's the opinion of the administration that keeping it as special exception would be unduly burdensome? Or what, what was the reason there?
I will take it, that's to me.
Sure.
Mr. Chair, if you don't mind. Pete Barron for the administration. It's, it's a great question, Councilwoman, and maybe I'll, I'll sort of start with, you know, thanking Mr. Bennett for the presentation. It was incredibly thorough and very helpful. Even though we watched those bills in the General Assembly very closely, there were a lot of moving pieces, and it was an excellent summary. And, you know, the, when the voters approved, I think it was two to one, and the General Assembly passed those two chapters Mr. Bennett referenced, it, it does require the county to take certain actions. And you'll see it in both of these, this bill and fifty-seven twenty-three, the next bill. Fifty-six twenty-three specifically is dealing with zoning. And to your question, Councilwoman, there's a real challenge on how far the county can regulate those locations. Mr. Bennett noted the couple of state provisions that are in state law, but also this verbiage about unduly burdensome. And it was our opinion that we wanted to bring a bill forward that we knew would pass state muster and, and not get us sued. The, the things that I think are important to remember here, and it, there's a slide on, on Mr. Bennett's presentation about the number of facilities. So we're not gonna see a ton of facilities. I think it's three hundred statewide. If, if the county is, you know, given what we usually get, which is about ten percent of the state, we already have several facilities in existence. We'll, we'll only see a handful more come forward. So it's not like we're gonna be seeing a shop on every corner. So that's a very long-winded answer to your question, which is essentially, yes, the unduly burdensome language was in the back of our mind as dropped, as we drafted the bill.
Okay, and Mr. Chair, can I just ask one quick follow-up question, just for clarification?
Please.
Okay, so I totally understand that explanation, but just so that I'm clear, there is nothing that prohibits us from keeping special exception in the law other than the concern that we would, could be sued by the state for being burdensome in Annapolis County to this type of business.
I, I would defer to the Office of Law if, if they wanna weigh in on, on what would, what unduly burdensome means. And I think there's a If, if they want to weigh in on, on what would, what unduly burdensome means, and I think there's a big question mark there.
Okay.
I, I wanted to add one other, I think, important clarifying point, uh, or maybe two on this bill, uh. The onsite, um, consumption, uh, we did not include authorization for that in our bill. And as Mr. Bennett noted, we would have to proactively authorize it. So. On-site consumption is not authorized in Anarondal County under this proposal. Um, and then the other just change to note, there's some, uh, adjustments and updates to the language, which brings in some other sections of the code in the bill. Um, but just to be clear, they're not really changing anything other than cleaning up some language.
Thank you.
Okay. Any additional questions on fifty-six, twenty-three? Is there any other news? Who was that?
Mr. Chair, sorry, Amanda Feeder here.
Well, go ahead.
I was just wondering if Office Law of Law could weigh in on the unduly burdensome language?
Sure. Lori Blair Klassmeyer, Deputy County Attorney. Um, so if you look at the, the conditions under eighteen-ten, I think it's one forty, and then the special exception requirements, they're basically identical. The difference though, is that if to get a special exception, there's an administrative process. So I think the, the thought was making the, um, licensees go through this administrative process was probably part, would probably be. Be considered unduly burdensome when the conditions are basically the same, so.
Okay, thank you.
All right, seeing no additional hands, uh. Fifty-seven, twenty-three. Mister, is that Hannah, uh, who's, oh, uh, Miss Dyer?
It's gonna be me, um, so Hannah Dyer, Director of Fiscal Affairs. Um, joining me at the virtual table for this bill are Budget Officer Chris Trumbauer and Lori Blair Klassmeyer from the Office of Law. And we may have Asha Smith, our Director of Equity and Human Rights, joining, uh, if she's able to. She was juggling a couple of things this morning. Um, so this bill, Mr. Bennett provided some helpful background on the Community Reinvestment and Repair Fund. Which receives certain revenue associated with cannabis licensing and sales. Um, and state law also requires that counties adopt local laws establishing the purpose for which money we receive from the fund may be used. So this bill meets that requirement by creating a county special fund, the Anarondal County Commit, Community Reinvestment and Repair Fund. Um, and establishing that the fund may be used to support community-based initiatives intended to benefit low-income communities. Um, and community-based initiatives that serve disproportionately impacted areas. Uh, and this is consistent with the parameters that are established in state law. The bill also establishes a Community Reinvestment and Repair Commission. Uh, which is made up of thirteen voting members to recommend the use of the fund each year. Um, and this is similar to the process that we use for the Local Development Council funding. And the Laurel Race Track Impact Aid Funding as a couple of examples. Um, so we are available to answer any other questions that you all may have.
Wow, silence, okay. Um, seeing no additional hands from council members on, uh, fifty. Seven, twenty-three. Uh, I want to go back to fifty-five. Twenty-three with, with the intent of doing fifty-five, twenty-three and then follow, uh, very closely with sixty-one, twenty-three, uh, just after that.
Mr. Chair, I apologize again for the interruption.
Go ahead.
We thought, did we? Hang on one second, um. I think the next sequence is going to be fifty-eight, fifty-nine and sixty. And then fifty-five and sixty-one. Sort of our group together after those three bills. But again, if the council wants to change the order, that's fine. That's just the order.
Or is it, um? And that, that's fine. I think, uh, there's probably a, uh, an intent that some of these other bills are, may not have a lot of, uh, um, discussion. And. So why not get them out the way now, which certainly makes sense to me. I'm, I'm fine with that. As we, we'll jump straight to, uh, fifty, fifty-eight, twenty-three. And that is, uh, Ms. Dyer as well.
Great, thank you. Hannah Dyer, Director of Fiscal Affairs. So joining me for Bill fifty-eight, twenty-three are Anne Bedowski, our Personnel Officer, and also Kelly Lovett from the Office of Personal. Personnel as well as Lori Blair Klassmeyer. Um, during negotiations this past winter, several provisions related to the drop program were discussed. And this bill codifies what was negotiated at the table. This bill allows for a seventh year of the drop for current and prospective drop enrollees in the police plan. And the bill also provides an option to repay missed employee contributions for any member of the drop who withdraws from drop in the first three years of participation. And we are available to answer any questions you all have.
Any questions from, uh, any council member? Makes sense to me, adding additional year. It's really tough on police officers, uh, recruiting, so. More we can utilize them, the better. All right, I see no hands up for fifty-eight, twenty-three. I'm going to, uh, go over to fifty-nine, twenty-three. Mr. Barron.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, joining at the virtual table should be Mr. Daniels from Central Services. And either Ms. Niederer or Mr. Swain, I'm not sure which lawyer. It looks like Ms. Niederer is joining me. Um, so, uh, just to, to give you guys a little bit of background on fifty-nine, twenty-three. Uh, this bill's, uh, been a long time in the making. Uh, we're, we're very happy to bring it forward for the Woodland Beach Volunteer Fire Department. Uh, what this bill will do is allow the, the Volunteer Fire Department to construct their new fire station. The county owns to little over three acres of land on Stephanie Lane in Edgewater. Uh, County and Woodland Beach are entering into, uh, a ninety-nine-year ground lease. Uh, for, uh, the development of, uh, the new fire station. So we'll ask you to approve this bill at the appropriate time and help us get another fire station down there, brand-new fire station, I should say.
Any questions from, uh, any of the council members? All right, seeing no hands, uh, we're going to keep moving forward. Uh, we're going to go to six, uh, Bill number sixty, twenty-three. And Ms. Dyer.
Good morning again, Hanny, Hannah Dyer, Director of Fiscal Affairs. Uh, joining me at the virtual table for this bill are. The Budget Officer Chris Trumbauer and from Law, uh, Lori Blair Klassmeyer. This Bill sixty, twenty-three, um, provides the authority for the county to levy the special tax. Known as the Special Community Benefit Assessment on Hollywood on the Southern Special Community Benefit District. In an amount sufficient to repay a loan of a hundred twenty thousand from Sandy Spring Bank during the five-year term of the loan. And the loan will be used for the reconstruction of a community-owned pier. And we are available to answer any questions you have.
All right, seeing no, uh, no hands, uh, we're going to keep this thing moving, uh. So that was Bill sixty, twenty-three. We're going to go now to Bill sixty-two, twenty-three.
Again, Mr. Chair, I, I'm going to apologize for my interruption here.
No, you keep going. I'm just.
Okay. The agenda that we did put out, and I think the administration has prepared for, now brings us to fifty-five and sixty-one, twenty-three. But again, if the council wants to change that order, it is up to the will of the council.
No, I'm fine with it. It's, if, so I'm looking at this, which document should I use? The, uh. The work session document or the admin rep list is the one I was going off of.
Okay, yep, so the, um. The script and the agenda have it in the order. I think the admin rep list. It just goes in the straight chronological order. So we do jump, if you are using that, we jump around just a tad. But I'm happy to, or not happy to keep interrupting you, but happy to, uh, to help keep things going along.
Okay. All right, so now fifty-five, twenty-three, I'm following. Mr. Volki.
Hi, Mr. Chair, good morning. Thank you. I'm sorry for all the start-stop on this bill, but. Here we are. We talked a lot about this the other night at our council meeting, so I'm not going to go over everything again. Um, but I do want to cover a couple of points that I keep hearing from some of the people who have concerns about this bill. Uh, one of them is that this will limit the number of beds that are available for mental health in our county, or somehow will limit people's access to. Getting the, the help that they need, um, you know, for anybody who's in recovery. I shouldn't have said mental health, excuse me, I'm. Just getting there, talking about recovery. Um, so with that. If you can, Madam Chair, I sent you, or not Madam Chair, Madam Secretary, man, it's a morning. Um, I have two graphics that I sent over. If you can start with the first one of those, I just wanted to share that on screen. And kind of walk through for everybody what the framework would be, um, from a legal standpoint. For folks trying, yep, there it is, for folks trying to get in compliance with this bill. So this is an updated graphic as of the amendments the other night. And if you take a look at this, um, you can see there's sort of a flowchart on how this would work. So if you start on the left side of the page where it talks about converting a single-family dwelling, right? If you are converting a single-family dwelling into some sort of recovery residence. Um, this is what it would look like. So will this property be licensed by the State Behavioral Health Administration? If the answer is yes, then you're a group home and you're going to go through that. If no, then you're going to come down to number two. Will you be providing onsite treatment? If the answer is yes, then you're a group home. If the answer is no, then you keep going down. Um, are you or an affiliate providing off-site outpatient treatment at two-point-five, level two-point-five or higher? If yes, you're a group home. If no, you're a recovery residence. So the reason that I, I would think this is helpful for people to see is because it walks you through this piece by piece so that you understand. There's no scenario where somebody who is currently providing care is quote-unquote shut down, right? What they are is either going to remain as a recovery residence and be a legitimate recovery residence under the code. Or they're going to become a group home and they're going to convert to a group home because the level of care that they're providing requires that they do that. And that does carry with it, if they become a group home, requirements that they sprinkle, requirements that there be, um, certain. Other fire marshal safety criteria that they have to meet. So that's what you would do on the one side. On the other side, if you take a look on the right-hand side of that page, it talks about as a recovery residence. Will I need to provide sprinklers and fire, uh, alarms in the property? And the first one you can see says that if you are a certified recovery residence. Then if the answer is yes, and then you go to two A, do you comply with the occupancy limits? And if the answer is yes, then sprinkler and fire are not required. So this is the part where existing recovery residences. Who are in compliance because they're certified, uh, through EMCOR and they are as defined. Are going to just be able to stay operating the way they are. If the answer to those questions are no, then at that point you can see. You're either going to become a group home or you are going to get into compliance as a certified, uh, recovery residence. Can you go to the second page, Ms. Corby? Of this, yep. And then here are some helpful definitions. So I can certainly share this with everybody else on that council, but I did want to walk you through this first graphic, just so that you understood. Every option for someone who is providing these services leads them to a way to continue to operate. So this is not going to shut anyone down. Um, and that's where I think. One of the things that I heard repeatedly on Monday night is that this is going to shut down operators. It will not. It will simply require that some people do things a little bit differently, but no one will be shut down. Um, I also would make a point right here that you've gotten letters of support from a number of the providers who are offering level three-point-five or higher care. Um, one of the things that I want to note about those folks is that when they do transition individuals who are in their facilities out of their facilities. They have an obligation to move the people that they're caring for into a recovery residence. And when they do that, uh, just sort of thinking logically about this, they're all. As far as I'm aware, I think nearly a hundred percent of the three-point-five or above providers are in support of this bill. It would make zero sense for them to support this bill if they believed that this was going to decrease the number of recovery residences. Because they have an obligation to help individuals who they're servicing in their facilities to get into a recovery residence. So by logic, if I'm the provider at three-point-five and I have to, under law, move a person that I'm caring for into a recovery residence. Why in the world would I ever support a bill that makes it harder for me to find a place for that person to move into the next level of care that they need to continue in their care? Um, so if you just think logically about it, the fact that those providers are in support. It makes zero sense when you hear this argument that somehow this will shut down recovery residences. It will not. And in fact, you did receive some testimony from others, uh, who operate recovery residences, who indicated that with this bill. They expect to be able to increase the number of beds that they have available as recovery residences, uh, because the bill allows them to do that. So in reality, this bill is doing the things that we all talk about we want to do, which is increasing the continuum of care. And allowing for a continuation for people to get the help that they need in our county. Uh, Ms. Corby, can you go to the other graphic that I sent you? That's a one-pager, but it's a little bit, it's on legal paper. So it may be tougher to see.
Hang on one second, please, and thank you.
You're, you're okay. I sent them to you last minute, so. Okay, there we go. Uh, we may have to zoom in a little bit, Ms. Corby, I'm sorry. This one's hard to see all at once.
Yes, I'm, I'm trying to zoom in here, it's not letting me.
All right, well. Yeah, go ahead, sorry.
Do, um, have these also been shared with, um, the county, uh, here, are the rest of us on the council?
Not yet. Ms. Robyn, yeah, I'll send them around. Yeah, Ms. Corby has them and I'm going to ask her after, after presenting them if we can share them with everybody.
And Mr. Volki, I did, I just went ahead and put them in the council's meeting folder. I've already got a few, uh, requests for members of the public who are clearly watching this here. So we will get everything shared as soon as we, we wrap up here.
Perfect. So if you take a look at this, this lays out some of the key differences for these providers. This is just a similar. Uh, type of walkthrough, but in a slightly different fashion, where you can see what the current law is compared to what the law would be if Bill fifty-five, twenty-three passes as amended. And so this provides the different requirements for non-certified recovery housing, certified recovery housing. Uh, OPIOP, PHP, and then PHP, and then residential treatment. So again, walking through this, the point with all of what I'm trying to show with these graphics is. In essence, this bill does not shut down providers. This bill does not limit people's options for care. What this bill does is changes certain ways that providers and operators will need to deal with how they function under the code. But it's not going to limit the options that are available. So we don't expect, having talked to many, many providers at this point, no one that I have talked to is expecting to see a decrease in the continuum of care. Or a limitation to access. In fact, the vast majority of providers that I've spoken to are indicating that they believe this bill will actually expand treatment options. Um, so with that, I'm happy to discuss this in greater detail if my colleagues have questions. Um, but ultimately, I, I, we're going to send these. Ms. Corby's already shared them. I think that these do a nice job of walking through as a sort of a flowchart to show that there are always options available for current providers. And anyone who's looking to expand treatment options. Thank you.
Right. Ms. Picker, let's see you, Hannah.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I want to thank, um. Thank my colleague for those wonderful graphics. I'd like to take a minute during this work session since, uh, it's our first opportunity to have outside, um, expertise here on the panel. I, I, I stated last Monday night at our meeting, my concerns with the affiliation issue, um. As, as my colleagues have certainly been trying to make. Heads or tails of all of this, it is complicated. Um, I still have, I still, my concerns remain as, as they were, but I did want to get at some of the issues, so let's get going, um. Do the, uh, Health Department and Mental Health, uh. Uh, representatives here today, um. Can you, can you kind of walk me through what you think are the concerns with? Or as I, as I see folks who provide outpatient treatment. Or even our residential, uh, higher level, your three-point-five and three-point-seven level folks that are. Looking for that and, and a need and, and currently provide that step down, uh, to long-term stability with recovery residences. uh, to long-term stability with recovery residences. So January first, this bill uh, as adopted, uh, if adopted as is currently, what happens January one with folks currently providing that continuum, whether it's a step down to a recovery residence, which is a very specific thing? There's no services, it's just clean, sober, healthy lifestyle living. Um. Can you explain what you think is the problem with um, higher level care providers having that step down in their continuum? And then I have many, many, many other questions like enforcement and we're, we're going to talk about it today, guys. We're going to talk.
Yeah, um, good morning. Tony Giddon, Health Officer for the Health Department. And I also have my colleague Sandy O'Neil, who's the Director of Behavioral Health for the Health Department here as well. And unfortunately, I have a ten o'clock that I'll have to join and I'll hopefully be able to come back. Um, but just wanted to jump in. One of the concerns uh, I think that we've heard expressed and I would say we've heard it expressed because this is one of those things that is difficult to verify uh, with residents, right? And folks who are in the recovery homes is that sometimes it's possible for folks who are operating a recovery home and also operating treatment um, for vulnerable pop- vulnerable populations who may not have housing or may not have affordable housing to be told that you can um, stay in this housing if you're a part of my program. Right? And so in those instances, and again, I say these are things that we hear, uh, our ability to verify that, it's most often not something we're going to find in writing and policies. And so that I think is maybe the concern that's being expressed there. That's something that we've heard. And it's not something, and I'll let Sandy speak too, they do um, the site visits and will go out if you are certified. The other piece of this is if you're not certified, the Health Department doesn't necessarily know that you exist. Um, and so those recovery houses or residents um, are not on our radar and we can't really speak to exactly how many of them there are, who's operating them and what happens. Um, because if they're not certified, it's not a thing that we have to know about. Um. To your point of when are, you know, what's the oversight or um, enforcement, it's, there's nothing that we have, um, if you're not certified, but I think that's one of the concerns and Sandy, I'll let you add anything to that if you'd like.
Um, Sandy O'Neil, Department of Health, I, I just concur with what Tony was saying. It is a very complicated system. You are not required by the state code to be certified and the uns- non-certified houses, some of them we know about, some of them we don't. Uh, the Department of, the Maryland Department of Health has the ability to um, regulate, it's probably too strong a word, but they do the certification for the recovery houses. And sometimes if there's a complaint about a certified recovery house, most of them we can, as in our role as that arm of the state, go knock on the door and say, hey, we have this complaint, this is what's happening. Uh, and they can open the door and let us in. Um. And generally, we don't have a problem with that. With the non-certified houses, some let us in, some don't, but there's not, it, it really is a voluntary um, action on their part.
Uh, M- Mr. Chair, if I may?
No, please.
Thank you. So I, I appreciate it and I fully understand the concerns between certified and non-certified recovery houses, but my question was more about the affiliation that this bill wo- would um, codify language that uh, an outpatient service provider or um, at a certain level, two point five or higher, which means uh, another service provider, treatment provider in our community at a three point five or a three point seven would no longer be able to also provide a, a recovery residence at that. How, how, one, w- why do we think that affiliation clause is necessary and do we in our county code? And if and how, if this passes as is, the county from an enforcement going to, going to do that, going to enforce, is going to go all over the county and, you know, if you've got, you know, you've, there's a recovery house over here and a, a across town is a three point five, three point seven residential treatment facility and they're using their recovery houses, which they have set up um, in a continuum situation for, for when they're because if you're in a three point one level group home, you can only stay there for five months. That's, that's the way it works. So when that five months is up, if you don't have um, a healthy, stable living environment to transition to with your family or with your spouse or wherever you were living prior to that group home experience, that recovery house is that place to continue your journey of recovery. Um. What happens? Why is it, why is it not? Why do we want to prohibit any affiliation in the continuum of care? And if so, if that's so important from a treatment, why hasn't the state already regulated in this space? That's my question.
So I don't think we as the Health Department can answer why the affiliation piece is in this bill. I think what we can answer for you are the things that we sometimes are receiving as potential complaints and or concerns. And again, I don't know that it's our perspective, that it's going to be whether or not it's necessary or not, I think is a, maybe a question for Mr. Volkey and the intent behind it. I can just say that the question around when you are released from a higher level of care, do you have stable housing and is that potentially being used for people to stay somewhere because they need the housing, right? Which is a different question. Do you have a choice, really? I think that is the question that we get every now and then uh, of whether or not vulnerable populations are being incentivized to stay with a treatment provider because there is housing involved. That is the question I think that we sometimes get, but I can't speak to why the affiliation piece is in there, what will, what the necessity for that might be.
So, so if I ma- if I may, we have mental health, behavioral health and Health Department people here. If, let, let me change the question then, because I was trying to, I'm not getting an answer from, I'm not getting the answer I need, right? But if, if I'm, i- if, if the client is in outpatient treatment, there's, they've been assessed to qualify for outpatient treatment, but they still need housing. So they don't have a place to live that allows them to be in a safe place for recovery. So so what we're saying is it's okay for the two point five level client that's getting outpatient treatment could still, may still need a safe place to live and could live in a recovery residence as long as it wasn't owned and operated by an outpatient provider. And yet, so if we, if we pass this bill as is and I'm an outpatient provider, but I also have recovery residences, the only way uh, my recovery residence can be in existence is if I drop my outpatient treatment program or if I make my recovery residence now a group home, which is a three point one um, level of care, which is different than what recovery houses. So my colleague saying that there isn't going to be uh, an interruption of service in the county, it, I don't see how that is because uh, if you're, a group home is different than a recovery residence. So if, if all of our recovery residences that are currently affiliate along the continuum with anyone else has to become a group home, now we're in a different level of care. We're in a care situation with treatment and we've lost those recovery beds. Am I, am I the only one that understands this bill this way?
No, you're not. And in fact, I think uh, I'm following the logic uh, that you're that you're sort of going down. And I think that's part of, part of the reason I'm uh, conflicted because I, I still don't quite understand why they had affiliation piece is so necessary for this bill. Uh, because there hasn't been a, in my mind, uh, uh, an alarm bell from, you know, all hundreds of uh, different entities saying, oh, if this person owns it and they're also providing this additional care, that's a no-go. I, I just, I just fundamentally just don't agree, agree with that. And, and so um, um, that is the, the one for me, at least is the one holdup uh, when it comes to fifty-five uh, twenty-three is um, I don't agree. And if someone tells me that I'm, that, that my brain is just thinking wrong, that if you own a, a, a three point above, three point oh and above, three point two or whatever the number is, um, you know, why are you prohibited from owning a two point five recovery house? Um, I, I just, I just, I just can't see the linkage between those two. And so, um, yeah, I don't know if there's anybody in the Health Department or the sponsor himself that could speak to that, uh, but I, I just, I just don't agree with that. Yes, who was that?
Mr. Chair, Amanda Fiedler here. If I may.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it did, uh, go ahead.
Okay, so um, I, I just, this is more of a statement and then I'll wrap up with a question at the end. So um, I like everyone, all the council members here in the room. Um, we have heard from a variety of providers in the county who have been very helpful in answering questions on this bill and how um, recovery works, how the group homes work. So the way that I understand this bill to be is that it is really about the most vulnerable populations, those folks who are at a two point five level or higher. What is the best environment for them to live in and um, continue with their um, their attempts and work to be sober and clean? And someone who is at a two point five lever, level or higher, is it really appropriate for them to be living in a recovery residence that doesn't have the supports, hasn't been ins- um, hasn't been inspected for health and safety measures? Is it really appropriate and are we setting up those folks for the highest level of success to be living in those environments? And for me, the answer is probably not. Um, it, it is more appropriate for someone in that level of care to be living in a group home environment. Um, but having said that, the way that I understand the bill to be is that you can have um, a group home and a recovery residence, but you would not be exempt from sprinklers. Um. I, I, I correct Mr. Volkey? I believe he can get into that a little bit, but that's to Mr. Smith's point that you, you couldn't have both, but I think that maybe you could, you just wouldn't be exempt.
Mr. Volkey?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I see Ms. Raviyan's got her hand up too, so I don't bogart the conversation too far, but yeah, that's exactly right. So let's make sure that we're talking about two different things and keeping two different things straight. On the one hand, we're talking about what services you as a provider can provide. That's one bucket, right? The other piece is whether you're exempt from fire and life safety measures, for instance, sprinklers, okay? Nothing in this bill says that if you're providing level two point five or higher care, that you're not allowed to also own a recovery residence and provide, you know, different things. It just says that if you do, you're no longer a recovery residence, you're going to be a group home. So now you have to come up because you're providing a higher level of care and you have to do sprinklers and fire, right? That's what this is talking about. It's not saying that you're not allowed to provide the care. So I think this is where these sort of two different pieces of this keep merging into one. And I'm not sure if people who are opposed to it are intentionally conflating them or not, but there's two different things there. So it's really, there's the life safety, fire, sprinkler piece of this. And then there is what services are you licensed and allowed to provide under state law? We're not stopping you from doing what you're allowed to do under state law, getting certified, providing different levels of care. We're simply saying, if you're doing this, then you all, you are going to be a, a group home, you're not going to be a recovery residence. So I just want to make that really clear because that's the piece of it. That's why I keep coming back to, we're not shutting people down. And I think that's getting lost in this conversation. So I appreciate Ms. Fiedler kind of touching into that. I, I was sort of waiting to try to correct that point as well. Um, but ultimately, that's, that's the piece that we need to keep those two things straight. There's the service piece. And then there is the whether you have to do sprinklers or fire. And you all got the letter from the Fire Chief this morning and I think she might be on the call somewhere and be able to speak to it, but you saw what the costs are uh, with respect to adding sprinkler and fire to an existing single family dwelling. And basically it was less than five dollars a square feet if I read that letter correctly. Um, so you think about that, if you're a three thousand square foot home and you're less than five dollars a square foot, you're talking about fifteen thousand dollars. Um, so I'm just making that point because that's an additional piece of information that is out there. So when we talk about what is going to be the requirement, if you are a group home and you're providing this level of care, so you classify as a group home under the code and you now have to do sprinkler and fire, it's about fifteen thousand is what they're saying, is the cost if it was a three thousand square foot residence. So I, I don't know if that helps clarify that for any of my colleagues, but I'm just trying to make sure we keep the services piece and the life safety piece separate, right? Because those two.
But, but I think the bill kind of puts them together, though. It kind of like combines them in a way that impacts both of them. This, so it's, it's hard to keep them separate when they are, when they're connected in the bill. Ms. Ms. Raviyan, did you have something?
Um, yeah, thank you. I actually have a couple of questions related to this. So first, I just wanted to um, check in with either, I guess, Office of Law or um, our, our council's council um, to make sure that the bill actually says what Mr. Volkey is describing. Um, and to make sure that I'm really understanding the affiliate piece too. So it's not all affiliations that are prohibited. It's the affiliation between a, a recovery home and per, a care provider who is at that higher level, two point five or above. Or I still don't have it. And I guess this is a question for, yeah, I guess I ask Office of Law.
Uh, Greg Swain, County Attorney. Um, so what, what the affiliate language means is if you are providing two point five uh, services or above, which is defined as partial hospitalization services, right? That's inpatient type service. You cannot own a recovery residence that provides recovery residence services. So the two are, are very different because as Ms. Picker noted, recovery residence doesn't provide any kind of clinical treatment by definition. It's provided group housing, you know, in a, in a communal supportive environment that's based on sobriety. Clinical services and these inpatient services obviously are providing that type of clinical service. So that's what this bill does, is if you own a, a uh, clinical service provider that provides two point five or above, you or any of your affiliates cannot own a recovery residence. So, and, and I don't know how those numbers work out in the county. I don't know how many providers offering that two point five services also operate recovery residences. But if they do, then those would no longer be considered recovery residences. They would all be considered group homes and you'd have to go through that change of use process, or you'd have to terminate the use.
Do we have, uh, so I understand just having conversations with different providers that um, the, the problem with having folks that are getting the outpatient care or the partial hospitalization is that if they don't also have the structure in their residential life, then they're highly susceptible to relapse and um, go, basically going back through the whole process. Um, and so that's my concern. I, I want to make sure that we have the line drawn in the right place, though. Are there folks that are um, that are maybe operating all three, operating group home, outpatient care and recovery residences that would be impacted because they are, they are operating a group home that has that higher level of structure in the residential piece? They offer the outpatient, please correct me if I'm wrong, but outpatient and P H P, are we using those interchangeably? I guess that's like maybe a question for the Department of Health or?
Ms. Sandy O'Neil, um, Department of Health. I really want to defer to the Office of Law because I don't want to try to interpret what the bill is saying. I don't know if the substance use system could have made um, our levels of care any more complicated, but we've done a very good job with that. There are multiple levels of outpatient care. Uh, so kind of that traditional outpatient, you know, you might think of seeing a therapist once a week. Um, that's a level of care. Seeing someone um, being part of a group three times a week is also outpatient. And then this partial hospitalization is the most intense level of outpatient. So generally, there's not a residential component. That's what kind of comprises the outpatient. I don't want to speak for exactly how that is in the bill.
Okay, so there, we shouldn't be using them completely interchangeably. P H P is maybe falls under the umbrella of outpatient care, but it is the most intensive type of outpatient care. So I guess to go back to my question, oh, go ahead. Ms. O'Neil, did you?
I was just confirming.
Okay, I thought that I got it right. Okay, thank you. This has ter- been a lot to learn. So I just want to make sure that um, so what I'm concerned about is if there are entities that are operating all three, that they have that they have a group key, that they are providing the, the higher level of outpatient care, but also have recovery residences. And I think the real concern is tying um, the higher level of outpatient care to recovery residence. Because at the higher level of outpatient care, like the PHP, you ought to have the higher structure of a group home. And that's what I'm understanding from, you know, the providers that are talking from um, uh, I'm sorry, I don't know his title, but one of the gentlemen at the state, um, uh, Sean Spencer, sorry, Spencer Gere. Um, you know, has expressed concern that tying those two together um, is the problem. And it actually may even constitute some sort of issue with um, Medicaid and that it's an, like inappropriate incentive. So um, that's, I want to make sure that we are allowing the folks that can provide the. So I guess that's my question. Are there folks out there that are doing that, that combination of those three? And then would have to convert all of their recovery residences into group homes? Say they have outpatient, I'm going to just call it PHP. They have PHP. They have group homes and they have recovery residences. And by the affiliation piece, they'd have to, they'd have to um, convert their recovery residences. Is that, is that correct? Is that the outcome? Is that an outcome under this bill? And are we comfortable with that?
That's an outcome of this bill and I'm not comfortable with it, but Mr. Volkey is. So if I may, it's not that this bill would prohibit someone in a PHP outpatient two point five program from actually living in a recovery residence because they do and will continue to do. They just can't be affiliated with their treatment provider. So what started out as a long twisted journey of trying to accommodate recovery residences and in following in our county, the definition of, of their certification at the state level, which is what Bill sixty one twenty three does. Bill fifty five twenty three adds this layer of affiliation and brings it into our zoning code. So one thing that hasn't been answered today is why is this, why is the zoning code the place to do this when behavioral health is both the payer and overseer and regulator of these, the continuum of care? Question number one, which hasn't been answered. And question number two, how is the county going to enforce this decoupling or no affiliation? How are we as a county in IMP or OPZ or the Office of Law going to ensure that there is no affiliation between treatment providers by using the zoning code? And none of that has been answered in any of these conversations. The regulatory side or the zo- the zoning enforcement side?
Ms. Hummer, if, unless someone's going to respond, I'll see your hand up and I want to make sure she gets in here. Well, thank you on mute.
Sorry, um, Ms. Pickard, I, I, I have the same question of how we're going to enforce this from the zoning side. Most of our zoning um, issues are complaint driven. Um, so is this going to be, are, are we depending on groups to, to turn each other in on this? What will be an inspection point? I'd like to hear from um, OPC on that. But I also, to go back to what Ms. Raviyan said, um, you know, recovery houses, certified or not, are a vital part of the continuum of care. Um, you know, even if someone has completed their treatment system, treatment program and they've maxed out their time that they can spend in a residential, many of them still need a very structured, you know, a supportive environment around them, which a recovery houses offer. And so I do, by limiting um, in any way, um, how these recovery houses could operate, for some people, it's not going to be possible for them. You know, they're going to have to change their care providers, for instance, because if the recovery house is affiliated or something may be. I just worry that it is interrupting the continuum of care and the limited number of beds and spaces we have on all things. However, I also wanted to bring up, I, I brought this up last time, I'll bring it again. I think so much of this, it doesn't belong in our zoning code. Um, if that's not the, it, it is a mental health, behavioral health type situation and much of this falls on the state. I have been, um, I, I've found a bill that has been passed in a number of states that addresses this um, concern that there might be PHP with a pillow. And it is a bill that um, that requires them to be, to the recovery houses and the treatment providers to be very upfront with what their, what provisions they provide, what services they provide. Um, make sure that when they're marketing anything they have, that they're separate things that they let people know so that it's fully disclosed. So it takes away some of that pressure. I have already spoken to two um, of our state delegates who serve on, on the health and government health committee. I'm not forgetting the exact name of it about pursuing this here in Maryland at the state level that I think would address a lot of these concerns about people being coerced or unknowingly being forced into a treatment care program or of, of something to, with an affiliation. Um, and I'm going to argue that I think that that is a better route for us to take is to go on the state level to address this, which is where much of the confusion comes in anyway. Let's make the state do their jobs and clarify rather than us putting in the, in the housing code. So I just want to share that this is something I'm already pursuing to try to work with our state delegates to address this and, and face some of these concerns on the state level rather than, than through our zoning code.
All right, I'm going to go to uh, Mr. Swain. I see your hand up.
Yes, uh, Greg Swain County Attorney. Just regarding the comment, I think Ms. Pickard and Ms. Hummer both kind of made this comment about having this uh, language in the zoning code about limiting business operations. So the definition that's provided for recovery residences is what we often do when something is a permitted use and a permitted use means you can do it as a matter of right, no conditions attached. It is uh, rare and I think probably unprecedented to include in a, you know, in a definition like that, this kind of business regulation where I took a review of Arizona code and I'm really not finding that type of regulation anywhere until you get to the level of a special exception or something along those lines. So to be clear, uh, the concern I think we all were made aware of that the state has with this PHP with a pillow issue, their concern is that the PHP provider is requiring the um, patient to reside in their recovery residence as a condition of treatment. That was the, the, the wrong that the state um, was, was expressing and pushing it off on, on the local jurisdiction to try to redress that. So it's not something we typically do in our zoning code. I'll say that. Um, and again, the um, the concern is not so much the blanket prohibition against owning it. It's that connection where providers, PHP providers are requiring the patient to stay in their recovery residence. Now, the um, had another point, but it escapes me at the moment. So if it comes back, I'll, I'll jump back in. But I did want to raise that point. Thank you.
If, if I may, Mr. Chair, just to.
Mr. Sir.
Sure, I think um, this discussion is, it just shows how complicated this issue is. Um, and, and I think I have to sort of weigh in for the administration here in, in hearing some of these concerns. And we've been contacted since the hearing from a, a number of groups expressing uh, this very concern about taking a, a health regulatory step through our zoning code. Um, so just want to put that on the record there.
I'm, I'm going to go to uh, Mr. Volkey because I think I saw you had a response.
Yeah, thank you. Ms. Baran, can you tell me who those organizations are that contacted you? Because we've gotten letters from um, a number of providers. And in fact, as far as I can tell, it's the majority of folks providing these types of services in the county who are in support. So if you just let me know who that is, I'd be interested because I'd be curious to speak with them about their concerns.
Yep, happy to, to send you the names of the folks that contacted me.
Great, thank you. Um, Mr. Swain, I just want to clarify with you. If someone is presently providing um, services and they wanted to operate as a recovery residence and they wanted to be a recovery residence, but this bill required them to be a group home. They would go through the process, they would become a group home under our code, but they could hold themselves out to anybody in the community to say, I'm a recovery residence, even though they're at the higher level of group home, right? There's nothing that prohibits that.
Oh, well, I'm not sure if the um, if under the state, you could be a certified recovery residence as well as uh, a licensed group home. Not sure about that. But if what you're saying is they're holding themselves out as either a recovery residence or a certified recovery residence, but because of this type of a restriction, they're required to be a group home under county law, those pieces probably would work together.
Right. I mean, the, the gist of this is you can call yourself what you want to call yourself, but we as the county are calling you something. And so for zoning purposes, we're saying you qualify as this and we're exempting from fire sprinklers, basically from doing sprinklers, this very limited group. And that very limited group that we're exempting are certified recovery residences as they have been certified by EMCOR. So that's the one piece that we're saying you don't have to do sprinklers. If you're an uncertified recovery residence, we're saying you don't have to do sprinklers either, but there's a cap on how many people you can have. And if you're any other use, then you're a group home and you have to do sprinklers. That's really what we're fighting about here is do these residences need to have sprinklers or not? And so the question is, if you say, I don't want to get certified, I'm an uncertified recovery residence, but I want more than six people, the remedy as I see it is you just become a group home under the code. You put in the sprinklers and you can have as many people as you want in there because you're meeting the group home requirements. And you can tell the world, I'm a recovery residence and I don't see anything between the county or the state that precludes you on that, but I'm interested in your thoughts, Mr. Swain.
Right, well, this kind of bleeds over to the revised definitions of group homes uh, in Bill fifty five twenty three. Because the definition has been revised to require licensing um, by the Beha- Behavioral Health Administration. So res- recovery residences are not licensed. Um, at, at best, they're certified. So to say if you're, if you're not a recovery residence, you can become a group home, it is going to require that recovery residence to actually be licensed uh, as something, as a group home or other type of provider uh, to meet our definition. And the way the definition has been revised is you're really going to have to be licensed as a level two point five or above provider to be a group home to fit in the crack that, that you've been discussing.
Okay. Can I switch, Mr. Chair? May I keep going?
One, one question I'm going to switch to uh, Ms. uh, Ms. Raviyan.
Got it. Okay, thank you. Uh, Ms. O'Neil, are you familiar with this term PHP with a pillow?
Sandy O'Neil, Department of Health, uh, I am familiar with that term.
Okay. And do you know where that term comes from?
Ooh, uh, I know what it refers to. I'm not sure. Is that what you're asking?
I guess I'm just trying to understand when, how did it come into the common parlance in, in this community to be used? Do you have any sense of that?
Uh, I don't. I can say it has been commonly used for many years and the concept of being, having a residential component to an outpatient program.
Okay. And is PHP with a pillow something that is permitted in terms of if you're a Medicaid recipient? Are you allowed to do PHP with a pillow?
That's not a thing in Medicaid. You can do PHP um, as a Medicaid recipient. I believe private insurance also pays for PHP.
Okay, well, I guess, yeah, you can do PHP, but are you allowed to do PHP and add the pillow component? And say you have to be staying in our residence? Is that an allowable sort of incentive from a Medicaid standpoint?
Oh, if it's an incentive, it is not allowable. If, it's my understanding, if you're in any level of outpatient, two point five, level one, two point one, and you're staying in a recovery house, if you are paying, you know, fair market value for that, that is allowed.
Yeah. And, and so following that same line, um, the PHP with a pillow concern, right? It, does this bill address that as far as you can tell?
Does it address the concern of, I'm sorry?
Yeah, let me ask it in a better way. PHP with a pillow, okay? Does this bill shut that down? Will people still be allowed to operate PHP with a pillow programs in Anaronda County if Bill fifty five twenty three passes?
I believe so because you could have a recovery house and be a two point five. If that is the case, then it's allowable. The, my understanding, the issue with PHP with a pillow is not a problem in and of itself. It's a problem if the housing is incentivized to attend the program.
Mr. Chair.
I'm, I'm not sure.
So this is what we've been sort of waiting for. So you can live in a recovery house and you can be receiving PHP level of care. So, but according to this bill, you can't affiliate those two along the continuum by ownership rights. But in the world of reimbursement or oversight from the behavioral health agencies at the state level, it can be done. So as long as it's not, as long as, how does, how is the regulatory body at the state making, ensuring that there isn't a sort of quid pro quo um, um, referral kickback um, incentive to housing? They allow it. They allow of, an individual to receive PHP level of outpatient treatment and live in a recovery residence. So how does this bill, other than limiting a business owner from owning and operating businesses along a continuum of care? How does this? Now we're getting into another, what have happened in other states. If now you're going to have recovery residents crap up and you're going to be having referral issues back and forth, we're just going to swap whatever the problem is Mr. Volkey's trying to solve with another one. When all, all of this is not a zoning code issue. It's a regulatory oversight issue that the state agency should be tackling and not dumping on the zoning enforcement at the county level. Sixty one twenty three addresses the, the fire safety issue. And let me be clear, if, if re- recovery residents are forced in Anaronda County to become group homes and do every, that becomes a commercial sprinkler system, that becomes EDUs. They are no longer recovery residents. They are no longer, they are no longer sober living homes under the protected class of fair housing. We've jumped them up to a whole different commercial operation. And so either a recovery house can't do that. I, I'm just, I'm, I'm, I'm.
All right, Ms. Raviyan.
I think I'm, I feel like I'm leaving with more questions than I came with. Um, I'm, I'm concerned. I feel like, I understand what the problem is that I'm hearing from the recovery community is that we should not be having folks that are just beginning their care who are, you know, maybe just, just starting their recovery journey. They're at the highest levels of care. Maybe they had a medical detox. We should not have those folks that are receiving the highest level of care in recovery houses because they do not have structure. Not, and that's not to say they have zero structure, but the structure compared to what you have in a group home is insufficient. And so that's my concern. Now what my concern is, I'm not sure that, I, I'm not sure that either of these bills actually address what folks in the recovery community are identifying is the problem. Um, and to me, that is the, that is the, the thing that we should be addressing. I also understand about the recovery residences not having clear definitions so that there are, there are um, entities in the recovery community that might enter the recovery home um, aspect of the recovery step down who are not because we don't have sufficient clarity on, on that aspect of the, of the um, I, I'm sorry, of the continuum of care, that there's, that level is not clearly defined. So individual. I I'm sorry, of the continuum of care, that there's, that level is not clearly defined. So individual entities are saying they don't want to step into this because the clarity isn't there. So I I don't know if I have any more questions right now. Um. That said, you know, uh we also. We also talked about how group home, you know, the definite definition of group home is. You know, for our purposes is sprinklers, you know, it's basically fire suppression. But it's actually more than that. My understanding is a group home. Now, maybe this is based, you know, what is required of a group home in the county code versus what the state requires of a group home. What a state require, what a state requires is more than just fire suppression. It's medication management. It's twenty-four hour um awake supervision. I don't know exactly what the word for that is. It's um medications being locked. Um and so. I I feel like I understand what the, the issues are, but I'm, I'm not connecting the bill to the issues. And I would like someone to help me connect the bill to the issues, because I feel like we do have real issues here. That we need to solve, but I'm not one hundred percent sure. Um that we're solving them. And I understand that, yes, this is something the state should be doing. Um but the reality is, the problem is here and now, and the state hasn't done, you know, hasn't. Done this um aspect of problem solving. Um and in a way is asked for the county's help, so. Um, I don't know if anyone has thoughts that they want to share in response to that um garbled. And I guess I'm gonna, no, okay. If anyone has thoughts to share on that, I'm ha- I'm all ears.
So, so before I go to Ms. Fiedler, um, you know, I'll chime in here. Yeah, I I think you're right that, uh, Ms. uh Rodian about. Um, you know, is if if there's a problem, you know, we should be addressing it. Uh to lean, understand that piece. Uh the biggest number for me is, everyone would agree that death is a bad thing. That's an easy assessment on whether or not a system of care is working. And uh me using the death analogy isn't um. Uh to diminish our goals of increasing the continuum of care from, for anyone who's in the recovery community. That should always be the goal, is to to make things better. And I think uh uh that's certainly what the 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 effort is here. Uh, my interpretation, or at least the way I view this is. Um, you know, what are we doing? That's going to continue to decrease the amount of deaths that were occurring. And if you look at the amount of deaths that we have since twenty sixteen. Compared to what we had in twenty twenty-two, for example. We are, that line has come down. And so whatever we're doing, whether that's safe stations and. Uh, oh, you know, a different uh uh community program, base programs, uh provider, uh uh PHP programs. Uh recovery homes, all of them play a role in this process. And so. Uh I think, I think as, in in my mind, when I look at the data from two thousand sixteen seventeen and see where we're at now. You know, are we going this way? And if we're going this way, then we're obviously doing things that are in the bit, uh that are, that are moving the needle or moving the goal. Uh in a way that's benefiting our citizens. And so I think what I'm. Because there's so many uh uh confusion when it comes to um. The continuum of care and, and and the zoning code and which one we should use. Uh, um, I don't want to break something that's already creating a path to success. And if I'm looking at twenty sixteen data, twenty seventeen, when we're probably at our peak, the height of our day, uh uh opioid addiction to now. We've done some positive things. I would, I would, I would say that we, as a county, we've done some positive things to impact that. And so. Um, th- the life safety piece of this, as far as certification, when it comes to the fire department is one separate issue. The PHP from a, a policy standpoint, uh uh and how it's going to be leveraged is another issue. Uh so there are multiple issues that we're trying to solve. And while we're trying to solve them, I think my concern would be, do, are we breaking something? Uh in the interim while we're trying to solve it. And so to to mitigate that, let's, let's remove the, let's only, let's. The low hanging fruit. What are the things we can impact right now that doesn't impact anything or doesn't negatively impact anything? The fire safety, we know that's a piece of it. Okay, that's an easy switch. Nothing impacts that in a negative way, because they need that to certify. So. Uh let's create standards and and uh encourage folks to certify their homes. Uh that, that's, that's, that's a, that's a positive thing. Um, I guess. I I don't want to necessarily create something that's going to break something. And then we, we take this line that has been decreasing deaths specifically. Uh since twenty sixteen and then uh negatively impacted where it it now comes up. So that, that's my major concern. But I'll go to Ms. Fiedler. Because I know she had her hand up here and then to Ms. Ledbetter.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to, I guess, touch on where. I am at this point, and I don't know if it would help Ms. Rodian at all, because I understand. Where she's coming from and, you know, understanding the complexities of this. So with regard to the health regulatory. Um use in uh language in the zoning code, I think it, that really depends on the lens that you're looking through. I know that our zoning code is the only place where we define uses, and this is a use. In residential areas. Um so I think it's absolutely appropriate, uh although I certainly understand it's unique. To have this in this section of the code, because that zoning code again is the only place where we define uses. Um and then a major piece of the bill is the fire safety aspect and saying what type of specific use. In recovery um scenarios are appropriate for these fire safety measures. Um, I, I think we're over, um, we're making this overly complex where, to me, it's pretty cut and dry. Um, I understand that there is a financial burden to um putting in sprinkler systems. To a residential place that may not have them, but I know that there may be opportunities, at least from the way that I understand it. For the county to perhaps help in the future. I know we had a settlement from um the opioid abatement case. Um, could we, Mr. Swain, is there, you know, down the road, would the county be able to set up some kind of assistance fund using that money? Um, just something that came to mind.
The uh, one of the bills we heard earlier today, um. Which was, was creating that very fun. It's the community reinvestment and repairs. Special, I'm sorry, I'm getting that confused. We have an opioid fund that we created last year. Uh and that fund is funded by the settlement monies that we receive from our opioid litigation. Locally as well as state money. So. I think there is discussion about having those, I mean, i- i- those funds are only to be used for opioid remediation. So this type of use falls within that category. Um I don't think, we just received the money not long ago, so I don't think the fund. Is actually up and working with grants yet, but I, I do believe that is part of the plan.
Thank you.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, my question might take us a little bit off of where Ms. Rodian was uh. The questions that she had brought up. So before I ask my question, I'm willing to defer if there was someone. That was looking to respond directly to the question that Ms. Rodian had asked. Um and then you can come back to me, just for the sake of keeping the conversation. Flowing in in line. I don't know if there was one of my colleagues that had wanted to specifically respond to Ms. Rodian.
Allison Pickard, for the record, um I would, if I could.
Yeah, I, it makes it easier for me if we kind of stay on track, so that would be lovely. I'm gonna keep my hand up so you can come back to me, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, I think my hand's gonna stay up. This, I have, I have some questions too that, that run in a different direction. That I think need to be addressed via the amendment process. So last Monday, the council agreed unanimously to pull in the two-tiered system. Which was the original problem that we were trying to solve, which was. Sorry, administration, but I gotta go here. The administration made a choice in policy. To force recovery residences to get sprinklers in order to achieve to to. Say that they were meeting the local zoning code. Which is what they needed for certification as a certified recovery residences. However, we know that smaller counties that rely on the state fire marshal. The state fire marshal was treating recovery residences as. Full, single-family dwellings and not requiring the sprinklers, but requiring, but looking to. Check that box in the certification process. Um, at the state level. Say, uh if they, they were meeting all the other life safety measures of a certify, of a. Uh of the uh National Alliance for Recovery Residences, which is a long checklist. And their treat, then they were moved forward as a single-family dwelling. The administration, based on concern from um the fire marshal. Was not going to do that, say, was not going to move forward in that same way, which was putting our recovery residences, they couldn't get recertified. We've all agreed, this council has all agreed, through that amendment process, bringing in that part of Bill sixty-one twenty-three. Into fifty-five twenty-three. So the fire safety issue as it relates to recovery residents has already been satisfied. In the amendment process. So this, the, the conversation we're having now is about business affiliation. That's the part of Bill fifty-five twenty-three that I feel is problematic to regulate through the zoning code. I'll say it again. Um, so, so we're no longer really talking about fire suppression. We're just talking about affiliation. And can we? As a county, is it, is it wise for us to interrupt the continuum of care as it exists today in Anarundel County? Through the zoning code? Shouldn't, if this is so problematic from a treatment, ethical, moral reimbursement. Why isn't behavioral, the behavioral health agency not allowing? Let, not, not, why are they giving licenses out along the continuum of care? And reimbursing, why is Medicaid reimbursing an organization that has both a recovery residence? And a treatment facility if it is so awful that there's joint ownership across the continuum of care? I don't know where Shannon was going, Ms. Ledbetter was going, but I do have a question, because the, the developmental disability community has reached out to me quite legitimately. And I think this bill requires some sort of, and Mr. Swain, you can speak to it, some sort of nod or acknowledgement that. They are exempt from these sorts of, some of the provisions, because they follow other. Uh they have other protections in state code. I think we need to make sure that our in- individuals with developmental disabilities are protected. And we're not, this is solely about. Mr. Volkey's goal is about uh. Eliminating competition in the recovery network, not have, I'm, I'm sure this bill is not meant to hinder or. Um, cause a problem with the individual with diff- the, the ADD community.
Mr. Chair, can I respond briefly?
I want to come back to you, Mr. Swain. I, I, I know, I know, I heard it, uh, because I, I want to, I know Ms. Ledbetter was. Okay, all right, Mr. Volkey, go ahead.
Just briefly, I would appreciate if we don't talk about what each other's intent is, because I don't. Uh, you know, it's hard to intuit that with another person to actually get into their mind. Uh so that's number one. Number two, Ms. Rodian, I would just say this to you. You've heard from a lot of providers, the question about what's really going on here and are we solving the problem or not? I would just point out to you, you've heard from Hope House, Uplift Recovery Homes, Work Life Behavioral Health and Professional Training, Project Chesapeake, Gorenzia. Chrysalis House, Samaritan House, all of these are providers in the community providing these services. And they have all come out in support of this bill and said it is solving the problem. So I would just say, I would share with you, if you want to find out what's really going on. Talk to the people who are on the ground who are doing it, who are saying this is the right way to deal with this. I would add. I don't know what's going on in the background here and why there is so much opposition from the administration, but I would just be clear. From a defense standpoint, sometimes when you want to make things look like they're a lot tougher than they are, you muddy the waters. And that's a lot of what's happening today. That's why I keep trying to come back to, let's be clear about what we're doing. That's why I sent those graphics. So I just think, keep that in mind, because it's, it's. You know, there's an easy way to look at this and a much harder way to look at this, right? And the last piece is, with respect to developmental disabilities, we passed that amendment at the last meeting. So I would just point out to my colleagues, we already did address that. We specifically did an amendment that made it clear that this applied only to substance use disorders. That's all.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Um, this is probably a very simple question. Um, but I want to make sure that I'm a hundred percent crystal clear as we continue to consider this bill. So the question is. We have an effective date, what's uh January first, twenty twenty-four. So assuming this bill were to pass. There would be a homes that would need to come in to potentially come into compliance on the sprinkler system side of the house. What? Do they have to shut down while they work to come into compliance? Or do they have until that January first day? Um into of twenty twenty-four before they need to be in compliance? What I'm going for is whether or not in that intermediary time, would we be losing beds? Or is there a grace given while the sprinkler systems are implemented before? Beds are lost, I guess, is where, where I'm going with this. I just want to make sure I understand. Thank you.
Is no one going to address that?
No, I think he was reading. Looks like he was reading, catching up. Was that, who did you, was that to Mr. Swain you said, uh?
It was, uh, yeah, to, to Office of Law. I'm sorry, I might not have stated that. Of asking my question, apologies.
Okay, Greg Swain, County Attorney. So the effective date of the bill will not be until January, so the current law would apply. Um, the question that I don't know is if you are not willing to get certified. And you decide that you are going to go through the change of use process. Whether residents could stay in the home when the house was retrofitted for sprinklers. That's sort of a mechanical issue, and I really don't know the answer to that. But you know, but, but as far, but legally, since the bill will not be effective until January, you'd have that amount of time to try to come in, in the compliance. Either by getting certified or retrofitting, retrofitting or whatever. I just, I'm just not sure whether the residents could remain if the house was being outfitted with sprinklers.
That answers my question. Thank you very much.
Ms. Hummer?
Yes, I have two questions. Um, one for the Office of Law and one for zoning. First off, going back to our zoning questions, we have still not heard anything from planning and zoning. Or any of the departments on how they would actually enforce this bill if it went into play. So I'd like to hear from them about what that plan would be. I also want to just state upfront, I, I know that this is a very complicated issue. I have. No um thoughts whatsoever that there's malice on anyone's part about this bill. I think we are all very concerned about. The substance abuse issues in the county and what is the best way to, to serve the, the most people. And we may differ on what we believe are different patterns in there, but I think the intent of everyone when we talk about this is making sure that. Our vulnerable um. Residents who are suffering from substance abuse, um addiction and issues has the best care they can have. So I think we're all trying to aim for that. My next question is, Ms. Pickard brought up um our. Housing for individuals with disabilities that we have, and many of them also receive affiliate services. So they receive. Job counseling or mental health counseling or things that could fall in this affiliation. And I know um. Mr. Volkey says that we've passed an amendment that says they wouldn't include for that, but I wonder, are we now getting? Asking the Office of Law, are we getting into a fair housing issue? A discrimination issue, because we're treating certain kinds of um disabilities different than others. So we're treating those with um substance abuse issues would be under this stipulation that it can't be affiliate services. But other folks with disabilities aren't. That seems to me we could really open ourselves up to some challenges there. So that's for Mr. Swain. Thank you.
So maybe I'll go first, Mr. Swain, if you don't mind. Uh Pete Barron with the administration. I think um we're getting. And this, I think, is what has kept happening. There are so many questions. It's a very complicated issue. We answered the last question we're asked and don't get to the first one. So I want to go back to, to sort of the first one. After I sort of agree with your, your main point, Councilman Hummer, I think everybody here on the Zoom. I- is very concerned about, about the opioid crisis and, and do not uh take a party to anybody. Uh uh maligning anybody's motives here, I think. Didn't appreciate the call uh that the administration was somehow attempting to intentionally muddy the waters like a good defense attorney. Um, uh either. So just to, to be clear on the uh enforcement question, Ms. Hummer. Um, uh, either. So just to to be clear on the uh, enforcement question, Ms. Hammer. And I'll I'll ask planning and zoning and IMP to to take the bite. But uh, it it would be IMP that would be doing the inspections. Isn't that correct, Ms. Miller?
Um, Lynn Miller, yes, that's correct. Um, planning and zoning doesn't um. Review building permits for single family dwellings, which is how um, these uses are treated. Um, so we don't review building permits. We don't issue zoning certificates of use for these uses. So. Um, the enforcement would come through code compliance and inspections and permits.
So then I'll turn it over to Mr. Mr. McCara or anybody else. Too many faces on the Zoom.
McCara, Department of Inspections and Permits. Um. I I guess from a standpoint, yeah, we're also complaint driven enforcement. So, you know, if we get a call saying, hey, this, you know. Home has twenty people in it, we would go out um, to inspect it and force that. If if that's answers your question.
I think um. If I can, Ms. Hammer, speak for you, Pete Barron again, uh, for the admin. Um, did the concern I think would be how would IMP know what? Who's affiliated with who? Is that correct, Ms. Hammer? Sorry, be one thing if there's fifteen, twenty-five people living there. That's one thing I think you guys are equipped to. To understand, I think the question, and we'll let Ms. Hammer speak for herself.
No, that that's exactly right. I mean, how, I mean. IMP is, are they going to be going to recovery house and then checking all the paperwork to see if there's any other? I mean, how how would that be done to to see if they're affiliated with anyone else? Um, I'm curious as the process.
Sure, if I can chime in here, it's Greg Swain again. So you, I mean, under the bill, there's a number of different opportunities, I guess, for inspections. Um, there's the, you know, the annual, the fire inspection if you're not certified, and then there's also an inspection. That's going to be required by the fire marshal if you are certified. What you're talking about are complaints about affiliation. So both IMP and OPZ are complaint driven. So if there is a complaint, then whoever's making the complaint uh, would have to supply the information as to say, well, this person. This is a two-point-five provider and they're also operating a recovery residence. And from that, I think that's how the inspection would probably go forward. Um, but there's no requirement that every recovery residence would have to be pre-inspected to determine it's not affiliated. It's always going to be complaint driven. Um, and that's either from IMP or OPZ.
Uh, I'm gonna step in here real quick. Uh, Mr. Volkey, this this question for you. Um. With specifically with the affiliate, is there a reason why that's a non-starter with your specific bill? Like, why the affiliation clause is sort of a a non-go for you?
Yeah, certainly, Mr. Chair. So thank you for the question. Uh, as I've explained to you and others when we've discussed this. Basically, the affiliation component is what stops the PHP with a pillow, as I understand it. So by tying those two things together, by ensuring that a two-point-five or higher cannot then. Offer the recovery residence piece, it's what says you can't be doing this sort of loophole position. Where I explained this a lot when we were at the meeting the other night, but I talked about the different reimbursement rates, right? If you're billing out at a two-point-five level, but you're getting that reimbursement rate, but you're really doing recovery residence work. And you're not getting the recovery residence reimbursement rate, it's much more lucrative. So that's what the intention is with the affiliate language is to stop this PHP with a pillow practice. That has been indicated to be part of the problem. So that's a component of it. There's a life safety component with sprinklers. Yeah, go ahead, sorry.
No, that's the, I appreciate the the response. So uh. Uh, life safety, oh, not the life safety, the uh, the sort of it it taking advantage of the system or the billing rates. Is there uh, instances here in Anaronda County that that you are aware of? Where uh, lives have been lost due to PHP? Or uh, the provision that you're trying to, with the billing rates and stuff like, have you heard of people? Who have been in recovery homes that should have had higher level of care that it wound up uh, passing. Uh, where it's it's a significant here issue here in Anaronda County. Not the state, I know there are different jurisdictions and they all have their own set of problems, but in Anaronda County, have you? Are you aware of that?
So if the question is, am I aware of someone who has died because of this, then the answer would be no, I'm not aware of someone who's died. If the question is, am I aware that this PHP with a pillow is happening in Anaronda County and there are people who have suffered as a result of it? Then the answer is absolutely yes, right?
And define some, can you, when you're making, can you define sufferers one?
Sure. So at the end of your treatment period, when you're not useful necessarily for billing purposes to the provider. Typically, when you're in a recovery residence, you would be allowed to continue to live there. But if you're in the PHP program and they've maximized the amount of money they can make off of you, then you no longer have a benefit to the provider. Because they can't bill for the higher level service. And so at that point, they are moving people out of their homes. And putting them out without housing, without any tenant rights, without any option for additional care.
And we've, we've had that problem set here in Anaronda County.
Yes, sir. And that was a, one of the young ladies who came and testified in front of us on Monday night, talked about that. Her name was Amanda Dickens. And as I mentioned to you, I'm happy to connect you with her if you want to hear from her directly. There are other people. She is simply one person. And I I know some of our other colleagues have taken the time to hear from her and hear about that situation.
Okay, uh, Ms. Ms. Robin, your hand still up? Okay, go ahead, over to you.
Thank you. I know this is a lot of folks to manage with a lot of questions. So thank you, um, Mr. Chair for uh, for keeping all of this moving. So um. I guess I, if it's okay, I have a couple of questions. Um. Um, but I'm going to start with a comment. I actually spoke with someone who was in um, a uh, PHP with a pillow program. That um. That said that there indeed was a fatal overdose in the, in the recovery or the recovery residence. Where she was staying. And so that even one is indeed a concern. Um, I also spoke with providers who what they see is that rather than um, you know. Having sort of an effective step down and ultimately integration back into the community, what they're seeing with the PHP with a pillow. Is folks basically cycling through the process and never making it out of the recovery process. And so to me, that, you know, I think we do need to measure in more than fatalities. I mean, fatalities obviously is the ultimate thing we want to address. But when we have folks that are not actually making it all the way to recovery. Um, and we and we can identify that the lack of structure in that early part of their recovery is the, is one of the contributing factors. Then we need to be, you know, we need to be looking really carefully on that. And so that leads to my question. Which is, we've heard that this um, tying um. Outpatient, the partial hospitalization, that high level of outpatient care, tying it with the recovery residence. Is in with a free recovery residence is an illegal incentive under Medicaid. Who should be, who is responsible and or how, and this is maybe a question for Department of Health. Who um, is responsible for enforcing um? Or I guess if if we're saying, if we know that it's an illegal incentive, who is the one that should be going after that practice? Because it seems like that maybe, if it's already, you know, not allowed under, if it's an illegal practice under Medicaid, there. I'm assuming there's, should be already a a path to make that stop. And so maybe that's a question for Office of Law. Is it totally complaint driven? How do we get to that? Because that, that seems like. The the biggest problem.
So if the question is, who would enforce illegal Medicare incentives? I could not sure who it would be, but I'm pretty sure it's not the county. Um, that sounds like a federal issue to me. Um, you know, and one I I think brought at least to my attention by the State Department of Health. So I'm not sure exactly who would enforce that and at what level.
And what did you say about the State Department of Health? I'm sorry, I just couldn't quite hear you.
The the issue about this being an illegal Medicaid incentive was brought at least to my attention by the State Department of Health, Mr. Spears. Um, when, you know, in kind of identifying what this PHP with a pillow issue consisted of.
Okay, so I think there's our problem. We have, oh, I'm sorry, that, um. Officer Gudden, please, please continue. Let me not interrupt you.
Yeah, no, no problem. Um, so we are often the entity that the state will send out as the local behavioral health authority. Um, so we go out under their auspices and we can inspect facilities. The ability to prove that this is happening is where the rubber really meets the road, right? It's not written in policies. Oftentimes, the residents, while they are in the home, if this is happening, we're not. Getting any confirmation from the folks that are in the home. And so while yes, we have also heard this, we have had this conversation with the state. The ability to say when we're going out on these visits and Sandy, please jump in if I'm stating anything incorrectly. To actually prove that this is happening is something that we're not really able to do. Um, there's no way to verify oftentimes unless someone who's actively in a program at that moment. Or someone who is administering the recovery home says that this is what's happening, right? So there's, that I think is where your question about who's, we are, you know, as a part of the state system. Um, we are the folks who would go out if there's a complaint. But then we have to be able to verify that in order to take any next steps or for the state to be able to report it up.
So if we're saying then um, that, you know, that makes it sound like it's very difficult. Um, you know, it's very difficult to identify when this is happening. So the the solution, you know, um, Mr. Swain, you said really this is a federal or at least a state issue. But they don't really have a really effective mechanism to stop this. We still have the problem. And um, it's impacting our county. Um, and and. Honestly, one of the things that concerns me is that if we have folks that are in recovery that are in sort of a revolving door pattern. That takes up beds as well. You know, folks that, you know, maybe, I don't know what the ordinary length of time for, you know, the recovery from. You know, start to full integration or full, you know, I don't even know what the terminology is, but I think you understand what I mean. Full reintegration to the community. Um. If that is prolonged because we have a sort of a revolving door issue, then that. Takes away beds that needed because we're not using the beds we have sort of in efficient way. And I hate to talk about efficiency when we're talking about. The welfare of people, but we we have limited resources and we shouldn't be um, sort of focusing up them on um. You know, processes that are not working well. Um, I also just want to respond to, I I think this was a comment Mr. Smith made a while back. About, you know, we do, we have put a lot of measures in place in the county and the state of Maryland in general have put in a lot of measures to um. You know, to really br- bring down the number of fatal overdoses, but I think we can't completely ignore that there are a gazillion factors. Outside of what um, you know, we are able to do. In a legislative and regulatory and policy um, environment that impact what is going on. And I'm I'm sure the health experts in the room could probably give, you know, another ten examples of things that impact. The the level of overdoses, whether we're talking fatal or not. Um, so I just wanted to point that out that, you know, I do see that as a valuable measure, but it certainly can't be the only measure.
All right, Ms. uh, Ms. Hammer.
Um, yes, I just want to go back uh, to my previous question that that we didn't answer. Um. Um, perhaps Mr. Swain can answer about, would we be um, by exempting our homes for. Um. Adults with um, intellectual disabilities from this affiliation language. But having the same language in place for those with substance abuse addiction, is that a? Potentially a discriminatory use that we're setting one standard for. Certain kinds of disabilities that we don't have the other. So that's a question for Mr. Swain.
Sure. Well, yeah, as I think we've talked about earlier, the scope of the Fair Housing Act is very broad. Uh, but it usually focuses on the individuals who are getting housing versus the organizations. That are that are providing housing for them. So it's a little bit of a closer call. Um, I think. Keeping in mind, that's the um, you know, the basic tenet of the Fair Housing Act is you should be treating housing for the disabled. The same as you treat housing for single family. It draws a pretty heavy line. The um, if you are going to have a policy that potentially discriminates against fair housing. There needs to be a substantial justification for it. And that needs to be not nondiscriminatory as it can be and legitimately legitimately supported by governmental interest. So that's kind of the bar you'd have to, I guess, on this, you'd be balancing the interest on preventing PHP with a pillow. And the loop that Mrs. Rodby and was talking about uh, against a potentially discriminatory line in the sand saying. You two-point-five or above cannot own a recovery residence. So making that connection. Uh, you know, would be really where the the controversy would be. But potentially, I think anything that that treats disabled folks differently. Potentially could violate the FHA again, unless there's that substantial uh, legitimate justification for it.
And, uh, Mr. Swain, uh, um, what about the, to address the EDU conversation, uh, any comments on? Uh, where you, Mr. Volkey, uh, uh, if any transitions or potential EDU impacts?
Well, you know, as far uh, the bill um, and the provisions of the the bill regarding. What you need to do to be considered a recovery residence. Um, if you are certified and you're in accordance with the state requirements, then you're not going to have EDU issues. Because you don't have to go through the change of use process. And that's what triggers EDUs. Just as I can have fifteen people in my family living in my house, you know, that same logic goes. Um, with a certified recovery residence under the bill. If you do have to go through the change of use permit requirement, then there could be EDU impact depending on the proposed use, how they, how the um. Department of Public Works gauges that use.
Um, Ms. Ms. Hammer, were you, were you done with your question?
I have, I have one other one. Um. So, uh, and I think this is also for Mr. Swain. So this bill would only pertain to affiliates within Anarunda County. Because I know a number of our providers have recovery houses or or counseling centers or different things. Throughout multiple counties through the state. So can we? Would we be able to say no that that a recovery house here can't be affiliated with? Say the counseling services that are in Baltimore City if they're not within Anarunda County? Um. How does that limit across county lines?
Well, it does, I mean, it would not go across county lines, but I mean, the way the bill is written, if you are a provider that provides those two-point-five or above. You can't have a recovery residence in Anaronda County. That's how that would translate.
But they could have recovery houses in another county. That our folks could go to.
Right.
So they could still be providing the care. They could just have one right across the line in Baltimore City and be serving their people there. Um.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Pickard.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Now that everyone is completely twisted in knots over this issue, um. You know, I think one thing we do know from our providers is that the complete continuum raises success, correct? What I don't understand from this conversation is it's not really getting to. If you just turn your recovery residence into a group home based on our county zoning code. How does that eliminate the PHP with a pillow? Because if I've now group homed my actual recovery residence. Couldn't I still be incentivizing or using my treatment and incentivizing housing? Just not at a recovery residence, but a county regu- a county. Stated group home. That's for Mr. Wilkie.
I'll have to get back to you. I mean, the the short answer is, I, my understanding from this bill is that it would shut that down, but I'm happy to look at it and get you an answer to that question.
Again, I just think we're, we're trying to do a lot within our zoning code. And I don't actually think. I think if PHP with a pillow is really. And I don't actually think, I think if PHP with a pillow is really what this bill's trying to eliminate, I think it's just going to crop up in a different way. Um, while the one thing I would like to put in everybody's mind, and, and I'll just put it out there, I have an amendment drafted regarding grandfathering. And which would ensure the question and concern Ms. Ledbetter had about the interruption of the continuum of care and beds as they currently exist in the county. So the amendment, which I'll bring forward, um, next week at our meeting is in regarding grandfathering the folks that are currently operating along that continuum currently. Um, between now and January 1st. And, and if this bill were, if this affiliation provision were to go forward, um, it would be forward looking and not interrupt any continuum of care like our Chrisless House or Evolve, or some of those individuals that are currently serving and operating in compliance with their licensure and state certifications to remain, um, in the state that they exist today. This council has, uh, well, at least the last term, we were quite, it was a standing operating procedure to grandfather, um, in many instances when drastic changes to land use and zoning codes were. Um, and I hope that this would be, um, I mean, I hope we could just proceed with Bill 6123. But if, if that is not the will of the majority of the council, I think we should grandfather our current um, operators, uh, and move forward in a different way. And probably come back at this, um, as the state moves forward, um, in their regulatory issues. Um, because I think it is something the state needs to tackle.
Ms. Ledbetter. I think you're muted.
Thank you. Um, I, if this is not the appropriate time to ask this question, please correct me. Um, but I just wanted to, since if we're discussing 6123 kind of simultaneously with 5523, I, would this be an appropriate time? I would love just to get a clear understanding is that at this point is the biggest difference between these two bills? The one has this affiliate language and the other doesn't, or are there other differences as well that we as a council should be? Make sure that we're discussing and that we're aware of?
No, I'll transition over to, to, um, the Madam Chair to sort of give an intro. She wanted to on 6123. There is, uh, it's, it's, it's two different things, two activities that are, that are occurring, but she can certainly explain that. Uh, and we'll sort of hit on 6123 since we're at a good transition point.
That's perfect. I just wanted, I wasn't sure how we were going to do that. I just didn't want that to get lost in the, in the mix.
Well, at this point, um, thank you, Mr. Chair. At this point, Bill 6123, um, the majority of it has been incorporated into Bill 5523. The main part that has not is the definition of recovery residence. And my bill incorporates the state definition of a recovery residence. Um, without the caveat of Bill 5523 that says you can't be affiliated with any sort of 2.5 or higher level of treatment provider. That's the main difference at this point. Bill 5523 has other issues that get into group homes and group home one and group home two and, and things like that. But, um, the bill that I have crafted, um, and it's taken many years to get to this point, um, was really about Anarundo County being, uh, uh, the way we were dealing with fire suppression and outside of what a single family home, uh, was required to be, which was outside of the state certification process. It was more, we were more, we are currently more, um, uh, uh, I can't think of the right word. We, we go beyond the National Association of Recovery Residences, um, life safety measures and require fire suppression sprinkler systems in any homes that were built before 2008. Whereas my home wasn't required. I live in a home built in the early 2000s and I don't have sprinklers. So that was the whole crux of, because our recovery residences were trying to get recertified and we had this new policy at the, at the administration level, a policy, not a code, a policy that they couldn't then, the fire marshal was unwilling to sign off that they were meeting the local code. So because of that, they couldn't get recertified. Whereas if in other counties in the state, the state fire marshal, where the state fire marshal has jurisdiction, they were saying, giving a thumbs up to those recovery houses seeking certification if they met the life safety measures of the certification process. Does that make sense? So we were, we were in, we were in this vicious loop. And in some instances, in other jurisdictions, what, what is happening? Because this is a problem across the state. This isn't just, this is a problem in all the counties that have their own state, their own appointed fire marshal. If you don't, you're, you're good. They're not dealing with this problem. Um, because that, the state fire marshal has gone a different direction. In other jurisdictions, the fire marshal doesn't inspect a single family home, but won't give a letter saying that we don't inspect single family dwellings. Which if they got that letter, if the recovery residents received that letter, they could go and get a third party fire inspection to verify that they've met the life safety requirements of certification and they'd be good to go. So it's just this vicious loop. This is what I was trying, I've been working on uh, with the administration, with, we've toured, we've talked, we've conferenced, we've had different iterations of this bill. And that's where 6123 has been in the works and getting to this point, creating this two-tiered system, which when incentivizes, it incentivizes and encourages certification, but doesn't require it and gets out of that vicious loop for them to be in compliance with life safety from their certifying body, but not make them go farther, which is cost prohibitive in many instances. That was the genesis of Bill 6123. 5523 goes bit, goes farther into regulating behavioral health treatment facilities in a different way about this, which I just disagree with. As you know, I don't believe it's something we should be, and I don't think we have a great mechanism to even enforce it or manage it through a complaint-driven zoning code enforcement thing. I think it's wonky and I think, I don't think we're actually going to solve that problem, um, through the zoning code. But I haven't, nobody came to me when I've been working on this issue with that problem. That was not the problem I was trying to solve. I didn't even really know about that problem until Mr. Volkey brought the bill forward because it hasn't, no one has brought it to me, a client, a recovery client, or, or, nobody brought it to me as this was a big issue. All of the folks that I have been working with are in compliance with the state. They're working, they're in compliance with Medicaid reimbursement. So, uh, who is it for me to, that wasn't the problem I was trying to solve. So I hope that helps explain the difference between the two bills. One was this fire suppression, life safety thing, and Mr. Volkey's goes in a completely different direction. Is that, did I answer that, Jan?
Very much so. Thank you.
All right. Any additional, uh, discussions or questions about 6123? All right, Ms. Picker, just associate or hand up any, any additional remarks?
Um, about any of this or about my bill?
Yeah, 61, specifically 6123.
Well, I would just say if we were to pass my bill as is, we would just be changing, we would just be acknowledging recovery residence, which is what, uh, we've gotten a lot of testimony about acknowledging and making sure recovery residences are permissible in the code, which is what my bill does. I'm concerned that some of the testimony we've gotten actually is in support, I mean, they support what is written in Bill 6123. And I'm not sure everybody fully understands all the nuances of Bill 5523. But, uh, you know, it's, this is not a competition. This is just trying to, I was trying to solve a simpler problem or a complicated problem with a simple bill. Um, I think 5523, um, is doing, uh, considerably more than I think should be expected of the zoning code. Um, so I would like to still see Bill 6123 pass as is, um, but well, we'll see what happens.
All right, admin, uh, any, any remarks on 6123 before, under one?
Um, uh, uh, I'll just add, I, I think we've discussed this at length. I think a lot of the concerns, questions exist. Um, there, if there's anything that this discussion has shown, there is no easy solution here.
Agreed. All right, uh, that being said, we're going to go ahead and move and transition to Bill 6223. And I think that's Mr. Baron or Mr. Hunt, I'm sorry.
Just give me one minute. Pull it up here. All right, uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman Ethan Hunt for the adminis- administration with me at the virtual table. I should have, uh, Lynn Miller from OPZ and Laurie Blair Klosmeyer from the Office of Law. So Bill 6223 is a request from the Ag Commission. Um, it would basically allow, uh, certain dual uses in, um, rural agricultural zones. Uh, where, and it defines dual use where you have a, um, farming as your primary use and then certain commercial uh, and to undertakings as a secondary use. We're happy to take any questions.
I don't see any hands. That's a, that's a, it's a good thing, I guess. Um, any, any comments from any of the council members on, uh, 6223? All right. All right, we're going to go ahead and transition over to Bill 6323. And Mr. Hunt as well.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, Ethan Hunt again for the administration. Um, I have the same folks with me. Um, Bill 6323, uh, makes a couple of changes to the, um, construction code. Again, this bill was a, a request of the Agricultural Commission. Um, makes certain carve-outs, uh, from the construction code provisions for, uh, structures that are primarily for agricultural and, and value-added processing. Value added is where you're processing a, something not for immediate distribution. Um, and also, um, exempts buildings or shelters, um, that are not covered by a soil conservation and water quality plan. And it makes, uh, certain changes to buildings that are only open to the general public with, um, approved zoning certificates of use. And, uh, as well as buildings on properties without active farming. And again, we're happy to take any questions.
All right. Seeing no additional, uh, hand raises from, uh, council members, we're going to transition over to Resolution 2823. Resolution 2823 and that is Ms. Dyer.
Thank you. Hannah Dyer, Director of Fiscal Affairs. Joining me at the virtual table for Resolution 2823 are Anne Baudowski and Kelly Lovett from the Office of Personnel and Chris Trumbauer from the Budget Office and Laurie Blair Klosmeyer from Law. Um, as required by county code, Resolution 2823 is the estimate of total healthcare costs for the 2024 plan year presented to council for approval. Each year, uh, Office of Personnel works with their health consultant to determine the estimate of annual healthcare costs for each of the medical plans. Uh, the consultant reviews the claims data for the most recent previous calendar year, which in this case is 2022, and overlays assumptions for trends and pharmacy costs and projects the cost per plan for the upcoming calendar year. Resolution 2823 reflects the annual cost for the new plans for 2024. And overall, employees will see about a 3% increase in their bi-weekly premiums compared to calendar year 2023. Um, I will note there is a technical amendment that the Office of Law is working on related to the exhibit. Um, and I want to say thank you to the auditors, uh, for catching that and alerting us to it. So with that, we can answer any questions you may have.
Any comments from, uh, colleagues? All right. See no hands raised. Uh, we're going to move right along to Resolution 2923. And that is Mr. Hunt. Where are you?
Give me one second here. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, um, Ethan Hunt for the administration. Uh, Resolution 2923 is a, um, property surplus. County surplusing approximately just under a little over half an acre, uh, to the Baltimore, to the, um, Board of Education for Anarundo County, uh, to allow for the expansion of the school.
Yeah, I was just reading the, uh, resolution as well and looking at the, uh, parcel number. Um, obviously that's up there near Pumphrey's. No issues here. Uh, Ms. Picker.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to take a minute. When we talk about surplusing property and, and the co-location of park and school in our county, it's prevalent and it's prevalent in the north part of the county. And I realize this is in Mr. Chairman's district. But I do want to just take this opportunity and I'll do it again next Monday to, um, request, ask, cajole both the, the administration, our Department of Wreck and Parks and the Board of Ed to work collaboratively on creating, um, enhanced park space even when the park is attached or part of a school. Um, it, it, it may seem like it's the Board of Ed's responsibility. It may seem like it is Wreck and Parks responsibility, but ultimately our constituents and our community members see it as their park, their community park. So I just, this is not, I fully support the, um, the surplus of the parcel, but I would like the county and, and the Board of Education to work better together when we have these co-located facilities. And, um, for the betterment of our communities and our constituents that live in those surrounding neighborhoods. Um, park space in the north part of the county is a premium and we know we need to do better on making sure those parks look as nice and as lovely as other parks in other zip codes. So thank you.
All right, I, uh, any other questions on Resolution 2923? All right, seeing no hands, uh, are there any items, uh, any council member would like to discuss at this time? All right, member motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, Allison Picker.
Is there a second?
Second.
I'd be in second.
All right, all in favor? All right.
Hi.
Any opposed? Hearing none opposed, the motion carries. The county council is adjourned until July 17th, 2023. Thank you all.